The continuation from April 12th, which was continued to last May 12th, but then we had a meeting conflict. So we did a query and tonight was a good night for people to reconvene. So since our last official hearing where we took commentary, we opened the hearing on last, on the 12th of May, but we had no discussion. So the last hearing we had discussion at was the 12th of April. And since then, we've had a host of documents set of percolated through. It looks like most of them came in in late April or early May. And some regarding Apple Country National Climate Solutions Project, some A and R sketch information, two sheets prepared by Hamlin Land Surveying, I believe Valerie met with the landowners regarding those sheets. An email from COMCOM that was talking about the site delineations and that they're still reviewing because there may be some federal jurisdiction, jurisdictional wetlands on the property that aren't presently delineated. We had an email from a Chiablatin Ocean Vine talking about walking paths connecting this project to the town. Valerie is going to meet with the planning board potentially on the A and R. The applicant looked like they provided a response to Valerie's 315 document. And you know, Joe, because I will send him a letter with his observations today. So got a host of documents that we could discuss or incorporate into the record. So hopefully when either Valerie and Joe speak about some of the things that they've been involved with, they can bring us up to speed on those documents. Then when the applicant speaks, they can give us an update on either what they provided to Valerie or any other meetings they've had that was pertinent so we can move this process along. And then, you know, one item we hope to look at tonight will be making sure we have a complete list of the current variance requests so we can start reviewing those and making sure that what we have as current and because as we say, the current extension time for this project is June 6th. And depending on how we wrap up some of these loose ends. And what we hear from Joe, there may be a proposal to maybe extend one more month, but let's see what we can get through tonight and we'll move toward, you know, wrapping this project up. So with that, do you want to start with the applicant update or Valerie, do you want to give an update or Joe on what you have seen with regard to the most recent documents?
Mr. Chairman, I'd start with the applicant to give an update. And I understand that Jenny Horowitz has limited time, so that would allow them to have Debbie get anything she needs to get in.
Okay, perfect. So Jim, why don't you take over and we'll go from there?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you all again. Appreciate your time. Um, I think
One interruption, I hope your son, I hope your child had a good birthday.
Ah, thank you so much. He did.
Is it a son? Was it a son or a daughter?
Yeah, that one was my son. I have daughters as well, but that was my son's birthday.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. You did. Um, so yeah, a lot has happened since we last met, as you mentioned, and I'll definitely turn it over to Debbie and give her a chance to discuss what she needs to discuss. But in our view, you know, we think that aside for some discussion, further discussion, I think that may be forthcoming tonight or in writing regarding some wetlands review by Horstley Witten, that the civil and traffic peer reviews have been closed out, if not, you know, 99% closed out since we last met. That's our understanding, but obviously, you know, that's not accurate. We'd love to hear from the consultants on that. I have submitted a formal written response to the town comment sort of response document. It was like a run, it was more of like a running list of comments from various boards, folks in the public and so on and so forth. So I have provided that. Happy to go through any of those responses. A lot of that is referencing either updated, you know, designs that we've, you know, previously showed to the board or updated discussions that, you know, we're having with, with folks in town about some of the items that would come as, you know, potential conditions to the project related to the fields and things like that. So that's, that's been submitted. And yeah, I think, I think those are the sort of the documents that, you know, that, that were on our radar to submit. Debbie, do you have anything to add? And I know there's, you know, discussion about where we stand with waivers. So I don't know if you want to touch on that while we have you.
Um, yeah, thank you. Sorry that I'm out. I don't really have time and I'm not in someplace professional enough to have my screen on, but I, I think Jim, you covered it between you and Joe. I think it makes sense. I, I, we did discuss a little bit, the waivers this past week with the team. I think it probably makes sense for us to take a quick updated look now that the plans have, they haven't moved that much. But now that the plans are sort of finalized and we'll submit them and then you know, the other reminder that, you know, we were just talking about our together. And I guess a little out of order for this hearing, but I apologize. I won't be here at the end that, you know, once the board closes the public hearing, you still have 40 days to issue a decision. So depending on where people think we are tonight, you know, we may, may or may not really need another extension of the public hearing as much.
Yeah, we'll see what documentation we get in. And we'll go with it. We'll certainly wrap up on that before we leave the hearing tonight aside.
Yeah, okay, great.
I mean, just for your benefit, you know, in from the, you know, from the board's perspective and Valerie's resources, we're, we're also wrapping up at the same time, another 40B. So we have two decisions that we'll have to turn around within that 40 day timeframe. Both are sort of coming up toward a June deadline. We've already extended the prior one a second, at least a second time because of the sort of late documentation coming in. So to be able to craft two decisions, you know, weigh in all the reviews of waivers and things, it may, you know, as I said, it may be a convenience for us to be able to have that extra couple of weeks to, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be a full month, but to give us a little bandwidth to simultaneous decisions. So.
Yeah, sure. And you know, to the extent that it is helpful for me to take some of the burden of, you know, putting together a draft or an outline, I'm happy to, you know, do that with a form that you guys have used before, if that's helpful. I know these things are a lot of work.
Right, right. So, you know, so we're trying to balance that with make sure we have all the documentation we have had meetings to decide on, you know, that we have the most current waivers that we have, you know, so that it's all incorporated and we can make those decisions not piecemeal, you know, so.
Absolutely.
We'll take that, that offer and see if that makes sense to assist with that. You know, run that with Valerie. Valerie is usually the resource that will be pulling together the decisions. So. But okay, without taking more of your time.
No, thank you. I appreciate you taking me out of order.
That's okay. You know, good luck with your other commitment.
Thank you.
So Jim, on that response, I mean, I'm sorry, maybe Valerie will speak to it, but were there any major open items that you on there that weren't addressed? I did try to peek through it because we just got it today on the board's perspective and a lot of it, you know, looks like you were responding to or that you were having additional discussions with town boards and so. Any showstopper item in there, open item that we should be aware of?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I'll defer to Valerie on, you know, the discussions, but, but I will say that that, you know, if you've been looking, you know, if you look at the document, clearly that I'd say the open items are, you know, the ones that we're discussing now with, you know, with Valerie and, and the folks in the town of Bolton regarding those issues. And that's an ongoing discussion. So, you know, Valerie, I don't know if you want to touch on that, but I'd say other than that, Mr. Chairman, no, I think, I think the vast majority of the other items are, you know, there's responses in there that have been incorporated, you know, already. I could be missing one or two, but that's my takeaway from that.
Did Valerie forward to, we had a, a letter from one of our town residents, I mean, email. I think you addressed some of it once at a, at a hearing, but there were a whole host of questions about energy supply or energy conservation measures or, you know, there was talk about heat pumps, I mean, things over my pay grade. And I didn't know if you had had a chance to look at that letter to respond. I don't know. Again, to, I think some of the things you were incorporating in with solar panels and things, but there were a host of items that I'm not sure the, either the respondent, the person who inquired about it felt that there was responses to. So. I asked Valerie to follow that G to be sure.
Yeah, I have not seen a recent letter. I think, I, I think I know what the questions are from the past, assuming they're they're probably the same. And I'd, I'd be happy to take a look at that and, you know, and respond sort of line by line. I think, you know, big picture is we've, you know, we have incorporated some items that have come up in, in those discussions along the way already, which is where we, you know, intend to move forward with solar on, you know, the two larger buildings. And I think more importantly, with the all electric heat pump system that we've that we've committed to as well. So, but you know, and so I don't, I don't want to speak off the cuff on what some of the other questions are, but I know that were, there were some other items in there that are, that are great ideas, but no, it's just certainly technologies that we haven't utilized as a company anywhere in the country that, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't be ones that we would be moving forward. So I'm happy to sort of.
Just to say, yeah, you know, we, we, we've accommodated what we believe we can technology wise and, you know, project improvement wise, but if there's some things that just aren't practical, just state that. So we can close that. I don't want to leave in a butter or a town resident feeling that they were left out because they weren't responded to, you know.
Absolutely.
Uh, we have a hand up and maybe it's related to this discussion. So Valerie, can you let Sharon Chapala speak for a second? And Sharon, please identify your name and address.
Yes, Sharon Chapala. Are we in there? I'm actually here at the behest of Tony Chagodnik. And he and I have both been working on this, although he much more than I. And I would like, I'd like us not to, to simply be satisfied with heat pumps and, and in a solar array when there have been a number of very, very significant suggestions, including, I think that we've sent to, or Tony has sent to Mr. Lambert, a listing and some discussions from a number of other multifamily units across the country that have gone essentially net zero in their buildings to great success. And so I think that, that I would like us not, and I'd like the ZBA to not, not to to say we're done with this conversation at this point. Because there are a number of things which have been proposed. I mean, one, for example, is the, the possibility of geothermal as a heat source. Because this can be done and again, and, and we've sent to Mr. Lambert, and I don't know if Tony sent it to you as well. A numbers of examples of, of these being used in, in multi-unit buildings to, to significant positive effect for the climate and, and for the people living there. So there's, there's a whole list of these. I think the ZBA has received them. And Mr. Lambert has, I'd like us to keep that discussion open. Tony would like to actually be able to present, he has a a PowerPoint that he could present to the ZBA to put everybody here on the same page in terms of their understanding of the value of these measures.
All right. Well, at least I think, say, Jim Lambert probably has that documentation. We'll see what he can do to review it and respond accordingly. And then we'll, as I said, we're hoping that we'll have a, at least one more meeting to tie up all loose ends because we do have statutory requirements to close the hearing, you know, we've been working. So we'll, we'll try to, well, we will, last, we have asked the applicant to respond to Tony's letter or email. And if it has all those details within it, you know, we'll see what's open in there, what, what is for open for further discussion. And as I said, there may be things that they can't do. I'm not going to speak for them or what they can't do, but we'll, we'll have to just see.
Right. Is there some advantage for, for the CBA members themselves to be perhaps better informed about these issues themselves so as to be able to make a decision about whether or not Wood Partners is, is doing all they can?
Or we have our.
Or all we want them, or all we want them to do.
We have our peer review consultants that are looking at the application from, you know, civil engineering, traffic, you know, so if in their given correspondence, so to the extent I would think something, I think something's a reasonable technology incorporated into the project that they would be responding to us. And I think Joe has a comment as well, but we'll, I'll let Joe speak further to that. And for Sharon, from your perspective, for your, if Joe's our peer review technical, peer review process consultant for the board, so he can give some better explanation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to assist the board in being open and transparent with regards to, to this issue. It would be highly unorthodox for the, for the board to condition a comprehensive permit compelling the applicant to utilize a certain type of system, whether it be geothermal, solar, whatever it be. It just, it exceeds the board's authority under the comprehensive permit regulations. It, it also goes, it goes afield of the doctrine of fairness with regards to how other projects are treated in town and what, what requirements are applied to those projects. So I would just caution the board with regards to how it might proceed with regards to any of these matters. Certainly, the information is important. Certainly, the board and as citizens of Bolton can care about the environment and, and try your best to compel the applicant utilize such, to consider such technologies to review on the, the information that's, that's disseminated and, and make a choice. But that choice needs to come from Wood Partners and the applicant. And again, I would just caution the board on ever considering a, a condition of approval that, that, that went in that, in such a direction as to require the applicant to utilize one methodology or another.
That's, that's fair. That makes sense. And that's what it was like in my inference with Jim or discussion was like, yeah, we sort of leave it up to him to look at them and see what's reasonable, practical, what they can do. And, you know, and go from there. We have another hand up, Janet Bernardo from Horstley Witten.
Yeah, hi, Janet Bernardo from the Horstley Witten Group, who are the civil engineers that conducted the peer review on stormwater and utilities. And I agree with Joe. It's, it's probably not appropriate for the zoning board to require the applicant to provide more energy to have recycle reusable type energy processes, but they are being used all over Massachusetts and geothermal is not that far out. And, you know, solar is definitely used on a regular basis by many various development teams, whether it's for lab research, or it's for multifamily, or it's for commercial or office buildings. So it is out there and our recommendation really would be that the applicant strongly consider it because it is, you know, climate change is real. It's something that would be beneficial to their owners, the long-term viability of the development. But it is, I agree with Joe, it is up to the applicant to present that, those ideas, but they are certainly valuable ideas.
Thanks, Jim. Any other questions? Any questions from the board on, on this matter? So Jim, so that pretty much the update at the moment. And then I can really look at getting some updates from Valerie regarding the A and R and maybe some of the special permit, latest information on that, because I think it was fluid at our April 12th meeting with the status of that of both those items were the A and R plus the special permit.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, from our perspective, that's, that would be the update aside from what Valerie has to add.
Okay. Valerie, you want to speak about the A and R and the special permit and any other items that you think we haven't spoken about that have come in since last hearing?
Sure, yes. So at the planning board's meeting of May 11th, they were able to review the A and R plan for, for 580 main that separates the commercial use from the residential use. They did approve it at that meeting and I am currently collecting signatures for that plan. So that should be finalized shortly. I met with the property owner regarding the the special permit modification. I'm not sure, you know, exactly when that application may, may come by my desk, but it appears as though there are some site plan modifications that he is looking for just as, as far as demolition of, of, of the building and construction of a, a different parking configuration. So that would go before the planning board through, through a public hearing at, at the time that that is presented.
So that's for the any of that impact to current project as far as the new potential waivers or anything like that?
I, I don't believe so. It seems that the, the use and, you know, the access with the driveway is maintained. So it's, it really is a, a separate special permit. We would, of course, review the conditions that were put on the original permit as when it was issued. But they are, it's, I feel like it's appropriate to, to separate the two.
Okay. All right. Have you had a chance to look at the applicant's response to your May 15th letter and any any items there you need more clarification on or any items you want to advise the board on, whether there's open or any issues?
I think I did get a chance to just quickly review it. I, I think that there are, I, I do feel like the applicant did a a good job addressing the, the issues noted on there. I think that there are some some components of that memo that, that I was looking for guidance from the ZBA members. So I know I just provided that to the board today, but as we, you know, look to start drafting a decision, I think it would be useful to, to get any feedback on that and just hear, hear what members' opinions are on, on some of those items. I think it, it may be fair to keep the public hearing open, at least while we review perhaps the first draft of a decision so that there can be a bit more dialogue on specific conditions or components of that. I just don't want anything to be a surprise for board members or for the applicant. So I think some of those questions might get a little more fleshed out with, with further review of waivers and, and conditions.
Okay. So on that sort of draft decision process, when given the input so far on the project and, you know, we, we sort of have a structural reviews in the past for decisions, when would you think we would start absorbing those into some type of draft so that if we were to say, yeah, we need one more hearing of open time where we could, you know, conclude we have all the, all the requested variances and they're incorporated there, then we could, at that hearing, we could decide upon at a minimum the approval of the variances because that's, you know, dialogue we could have back and forth where I think some of the times when we have a a draft decision, once the, the public hearing is closed, it's really just looking through the document and making sure it incorporates the correct record and, and things like that. But maybe you say first pass through, have an open, have it part of an open hearing. So people have a chance to give their opinions on it or correct anything that maybe incorrectly you know, proposed at that time, you know, so.
Right. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's typically my advice. Just, just to have some, some discussion there. Of course, if, if Joe has other recommended steps, feel free to jump in here as well. I think looking at my calendar, you know, it's true, it may, it may be pushing it to get a draft done by, by the deadline, by the sixth, but I can, we can, we can look at that last week in May, first week in June and see, see what might be possible.
Because I, I think with a project of this size and magnitude, I'd rather have a little extra time to go over some of the, you know, it's a big project and.
And as I said, we also have that other project.
Absolutely. We have to deal with, with that and we have timeframes on that. So I would be more comfortable extending because I just don't think realistically, we're going to get all the T's crossed and I's dotted by the sixth.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree. I think, you know, there is, there are still some quite, some outstanding issues that need to be translated into conditions of approval. There's still discussions happening with, with the select board guarding just basic public access through the property to the, to the adjoining public areas, community gardens, schools and so forth. So hopefully the board will take attorney Horowitz up on her offer to, to help craft the decision. She, or, or at least conditions that might memorialize some of those issues that might not be ready for you know, to, to fully formulate easements and the conditions that would go in, the, the full conditions that would go into an easement document like that, but at least be able to formulate a condition that envisions that and, and requires those final documents, those final easement documents approved prior to on some milestone, whether it's started construction, building permits, whatever, whatever they be. So I think there is some, some nuances and some complexities to this project that, that are going to require some very specific conditions. And for us to talk through those at, you know, at a hearing to make sure that everyone's comfortable with them and that it's not, not going to cause a problem for the project financing if, in case, you know, a, a condition looked too loose and open ended. Or, or whatever it be.
Well, one thing I would like to say is because of the project of this, like we talked about the scale, you know, the amount of documents, the amount of. you know, the amount of documents, the amount of, you know, other boards and committees that have been involved, I think getting that document in place at this point, or at least to a, a first draft as soon as possible, it was going to help everybody here. Because we can go through kind of one document and even, even if there are a few things that are still open-ended, we know that that part of it is open-ended rather than things being in, they're kind of separate pieces everywhere. I think we're at a point where we need that kind of initial document drawn up so that we can go through it together and have some time to go through it, you know, to Brad's point, you know, before we get back on, you know, a, a meeting together.
And I'm, I'm happy to help with that. I suggest offline conversation between Valerie, Attorney Horowitz and myself to say, okay, how do, how do we get this document put together in, in rough draft form so that it can get before the board and and the applicant and everyone else in, in time to, to make the next meeting as productive as it possibly can be. To run through those special conditions, to run, run through the waivers. And so that the applicant can get a, a handle from, from the board, you know, where you're, where those item, where you're coming down on those items and how that might impact the final formulation of the decision.
Right, because we, as I say, Valerie, you probably have a, we have a temp, well, we have had a template sort of document for the, the decision, you know, in, in the past, you know, structures been similar on, on a lot of our decisions, but maybe there's a way you can collaborate with Joe and Attorney Horowitz and if there's, they want
Yeah, this is
if the applicant wants to take the initial draft of what they believe are the conditions that they've proposed within their documentation and they can do that, you have the record part of the document, you know, that, the you know, that you could do. And if Joe has issues with the variance or both, you know, he can use his expertise in what he's talked about in some of his documents where he's proposed conditions that we should consider. Like and boil this into like one good draft to start with.
Yeah.
Can close the hearing.
And, and this, Mr. Chairman, this is a rental project, so it is a little bit different than the prior 3Bs. That are, that were for sale. So there's, there's definitely some nuance to that and, and some special conditions that will go along.
Okay.
You know, with, with that, it's also a LIP, so that adds a a few extra complexities.
Well, that's good that we have your research, your, your technical expertise there because as I said, we have, and this is one scope of project, the largest we've had to deal with, but also the LIP process, process as well as the rental process. So certainly things that we haven't touched in the past would be good to have your background knowledge on those.
Well, the good news, Mr. Chairman, is this might be your last one.
Right, or some last. Well, it will be in, probably in my lifetime. As far as we should keep our affordable housing stock current, you know, after this and we shouldn't, unless the state does something dramatic and changes the 40B law, we should be in good shape going forward as a town.
Jared? It's Andy.
Oh, Andy, sure.
Yeah, once again, I apologize. I do not have video access right now in my computer. We're going to be talking about some requested public access rights and use, use of the edges of the property for other purposes. But before we do that, I wanted to find out whether Valerie or town council is, is able to tell us whether the original special permit in 1986 has specific public access rights that were granted. Because the first criteria for me is not to negate any public access rights that were already there. And I'd like those to be reiterated when we do start addressing anything new that is being asked about again, public access. So maybe that's something for next time or, or I doubt that you're very familiar with the specifics on it, Valerie, but.
Yes, so there, there is an easement that the town holds over over the driveway essentially. So it's how the town is able to access Bolton Country Manor.
But I'm talking, I guess, more, more like what's being requested for the rear of the property, the fields, the gardens.
Right.
Yeah, that, that sort of stuff. I want to make sure that we're not preserving any rights that they, that the public already has and certainly not negating anything wherever possible.
Right, exactly. So we, through our discussions with the applicant, we will look to formalize some items through that process. I, I have not seen a formalized easement, oh, for example, over the, the, the well radius area, so.
That 1986 special permit is well before my time, 20 years before I moved to town. So I don't know as much about it as maybe I should, but.
I can provide that document to the board as well, just so, so that's a part of, part of the consideration, if that's helpful.
You know, I, I was here in 86, so we basically had full access to the lower field for the Bolton Fair. And I'm not sure what, how that was, you know, memorialized in, in an easement, but that, that was a, where the Oxon Pole was carried out and I don't know how we would utilize the land if we're not allowed to cross into it. That kind of is a taking at this point, I would think. So I think that's an issue that has to be explored.
Right, and so, so that is part of the, the ongoing discussion with the applicant and the town administrator and myself.
So, to those, to these sort of ongoing, because there were many times where Mr. Lambert, remember, it expressed in that response of to you that part of ongoing discussions, you know, how do we bring those to a sort of a conclusion as far as time-wise? Because again, ongoing sounds like it's open-ended and then, you know, we're looking to, you know, have a little extra time to work on getting this draft decision started so that we can have one hearing to review and then at that hearing potentially close the public hearing. But how do we know, how do we get those ongoing discussions defined as far as to make sense of whatever date we propose, probably by the end of this meeting, to say we need to extend for the end of June or something like that, you know?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so I, I can address that. So as Valerie stated, you know, we've, we've been having discussions. We had a, we had one where we were, you know, introduced to the requests. A second where we had some clarifying questions from our end after looking at the requests and got, got some more information which was helpful. So we are, we are actively reviewing the requests and what, you know, what they entail at, as we speak. And we'll be in a position to respond to Valerie and Don with our, you know, positions on each one this week. So it won't take us, you know, a whole lot more time to, to do that. So I think, you know, I think certainly we can move this along pretty quickly. You know, it, you know, we'll get back to them this week and then go from there. But I think, you know, certainly we can, we can have another discussion with the board on where, where we fall on those issues in pretty short order.
Okay, that's good. Go.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it goes back to, you know, having Attorney Horowitz involved in drafting proposed conditions. Mr. Lambert and, and his team can work on those conditions. They understand not only what the goals of the select board are with regards to preservation or expansion or modification of, of those, those rights and asks. But what they can live with. Valerie's going to bring it from, from a different perspective in, in dealing with the town manager and, and, and those asks and might have modifications to those conditions. I think we have to move forward with the realization that, you know, final easement documents and, and every T crossed and I dotted with regards to these issues is is going to take some time. It, it doesn't have to mire this process, but they need to be spoken to and placeholders being put forth in, in conditions of any, that, that, that makes sure that that gets done before on certain milestones within the project.
I agree there. So that, so that's a good point for people listening in. Somebody's adding stuff that memorialized in the condition versus having actual documents formally drafted and, and agreed to, like easements and things like that. But we'll have to certainly have those items identified so we can have a comprehensive draft decision to be able to be sure that the company has a permit or to vote on the comprehensive permit. Let's see what else that we haven't talked about, so.
We have a hand up.
We have a hand up.
Oh, Janet, sorry.
No, no worries.
I was looking for that little
I know, sorry, you know, I'm only so literate. When, again, Janet Bernardo with the Horsay Witten Group. And so we had reviewed the stormwater on the utilities, which we did feel like the applicant has satisfied our concerns when it comes to the general civil site work. But the wetlands piece is a slightly different animal. And so I know that the Conservation Commission is dealing with an ANRAD at the moment to determine the wetland delineation and approve that and determine whether it's a isolated vegetated wetland that is jurisdictional by the local jurisdiction or if it's a DVW. And Amy, feel free to jump in because I'm, you know, slightly talking at a turn here. But it is a, it is an item that could make a big difference in the design if they are not able to work around it. So I'm kind of curious what the zoning board would do as far as the Conservation Commission's process. And would you, would your conditions say that the applicant has to, you know, get an approval and order of conditions from the Conservation Commission? And if they cannot do that, how, what, what does that mean for you? And maybe Amy, do you want to explain that a little bit better than I did?
Sure, Janet. Hi, for the record, Amy Ball, Senior Collegist for Horsay Witten Group. Janet's kind of hit it on the head. There is an ANRAD review going on with the wetland resource areas in and around the whole site. And in part, there were some questions about whether or not the two, specifically, I think, the two interior wetland areas that were identified and whether or not they are actually jurisdictional as wetlands or whether they were constructed as stormwater basins. And what the proposal is to do that. And that, that whole concept of when a stormwater wetland starts to look like a real wetland, there's some, some deep dive into the regulations about when was it constructed, what's proposed to be done with it and whether or not there would be a change of condition to those areas in the long run. And we can, we can kind of flesh that out, but I suspect strongly that the Conservation Commission has, has sought a peer review, their meeting minutes from last week had said that or the week before. So their peer reviewer will also weigh in on that. And I wonder whether the ZBA would want to hear what the status of these areas is, in part because the cumulative size was on the order of about 7,000 square feet, which would potentially kick the project into a bunch of additional permitting if it was found that they were jurisdictional resources under either the bylaw or the state or like the Army Corps or the Massachusetts Clean Water Act. So all of those things really should be ironed out at some point. But to Janet's question is whether or not, or I guess, how, how that would work with the, with the ZBA decision? Or is it something that just gets conditioned that the, the conditions on the plans change with respect to wetland jurisdiction? Does the applicant need to come back to the ZBA for a reconsideration? I guess it's a question.
Can I ask where that area is? Is that the area in between the existing building now and the driveway?
There are two little wetlands that are, I think they're Wetland B and C. Those were the two interior wetlands. There was a question about.
Do we have like a map somewhere that someone could bring up just so that we can see exactly what you're talking about?
I think the last time I, I looked at it, it looked like it was like a little, like the indentation area between the building that currently exists and, and the driveway coming in. I could, I could be wrong.
That, that may be right. I'm trying to picture it in my head. The one is definitely wedged between one of the existing buildings and there's an area of, it looks like somebody's sharing here.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
So just, just jumping in, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major. So Amy and Janet and Valerie, I've really zoomed in here on the screen. One of the isolated areas is this wetland area C, due west of the existing office building. That line of the building there. And then just because tragically it occurs across, it stands our drawing sheet. I'm just going to pan, parent panning due south now. And again, the existing office building is here. The other, the other piece of it is actually obscured on the sheet, but you'll see a very small pocket of B labeled right here. So essentially, everything is right next to the existing office building, the B and C air, areas that are in question.
So again, maybe scroll out so I can see. So, so I, I'm, so B is kind of in front of the office building and C is right next to the driveway, right?
B, B is approximately here. Just for, again, frame of reference, just highlighting this is the existing office building here. And then if I would, I just have to switch sheets. The other area. Oops, pardon me. The off, the office building is again here. Right up in this portion is the tail end of B from the other sheet. And then the other pocketed possible wetland is right here.
Okay.
So it's in front of where the proposed larger unit would be.
Yeah, there's a building right there.
Right, yeah, I believe both of you, both would be proposed.
Right, so, so the, the relationship, just generally speaking, would be above here and above here, plus or minus.
Okay.
So Joe, to the extent that the Concom isn't through their process as we have to close, there would just be conditions in there associated with you know, to extent anything was major, they have to come.
Well, little, little bit more complicated than that. They're before the Conservation Commission currently with a abbreviated notice of resource area delineation. They are only asking for the, the Conservation Commission to define the jurisdictional wetland areas. The applicant has put forth their opinion, which is that these two wetlands are isolated vegetated wetlands, which are only locally jurisdictional. Which, under a 40B, puts them in your court. You have jurisdiction over these two wetlands. And what happens to them? The applicant has asked for a waiver from the local wetlands bylaw, which would allow them to fill the wetlands. What happens with these IVWs is that they can also be federally jurisdictional. But the board need not concern yourselves with federal, federal jurisdiction over wetlands. That's for the applicant to worry about. And there are some thresholds that are involved there and the impacts are less than five. And there are some thresholds that are involved there. And if the impacts are less than five thousand square feet, it, it could be very simple reporting to the Army Corps of Engineers and they could, they, they could go away. Amy says that.
They're larger than that. It's about seven thousand square feet. And that just kicks you into a, well, kicks the applicant into a series of additional permitting, uh, thresholds, including, um, if they, if they need something from the Army Corps. They would also need a water quality certification from the state D P, four oh one. And because of that, uh, cumulative impact of more than five thousand square feet, it would also trigger a MIPA review.
What?
Mass Environmental Protection.
Protection. Thank you. Sorry.
Um, but, but the Army Corps in the D P jurisdiction, again, that, that's, that's not, that's outside of your purview. Um, where, where this gets tricky for you is, um, I, I think it's being theorized that these areas could be state jurisdictional. And within the purview of the Conservation Commission. And if the Conservation Commission takes jurisdiction of them as ordering vegetated wetlands, because there's a hydraulic connection through the existing drain pipes or what have you. Then to fill those wetlands would require the Conservation Commission to approve that. They could not approve it, in which case that puts a big dent in the project configuration and major redesign. And if the board, if, if your board has already rendered a decision, you're probably looking at, at least a consideration of substantial versus insubstantial change to the, to the project and you know, could be reopening the public hearing.
Right.
That is entirely the applicant's choice. And although, um, sometimes it's seen as wasting, uh, the zoning board's time and energy. Um, I think we're far enough down the road on this project with, with regards to reviewing all of the mechanics, all of the civil traffic and, and other issues that the time's already been spent. So I think the board um, can move forward with the project that's presented before them. Wh- wh- with the assumption that the applicant's, uh, position on jurisdiction is is correct. And the, and, and the board should then deliberate on the granting of the local wetland bylaw waivers that is needed to, to, uh, to do the project. So I would what the, what the board would be looking for from, from Amy in that, in that case, or a combination of Amy and the applicants of wetlands consultants is, is just a consideration and evaluation of the waiver request with, with regards to do, does there need to be, um, certain conditions? Or mitigation, you know, put in place, um, to offset the loss of, of, of those wetlands as that pertains to the local bylaw. Understanding that, that the local bylaw has certain decision criteria and thresholds that don't apply here. The decision criteria and, and, and consideration for grant of waiver is has to follow the, the presumption that the need for affordable housing is outweighed, outweighs the, the local concerns. Outweighs these isolated vegetated wells. These, these are i- i- again, under the assumption that the applicant's position is, they are um, just local, uh, bylaw, I, isolated vegetated wetlands. Um, and, and therefore the, that presumption should prevail and, and the board should grant the waiver.
Uh, one, one quick question. All right. Let's say the state does have jurisdiction over this. And we close the hearing, then we have to go through this process all over again. What, what, what is our position?
You would, it, it would depend. What, what happens is if, if the project changes because they need to react to these wetlands being state jurisdictional and the Conservation Commission doesn't grant them the approval to fulfill the wetlands. Then the board has to review the, the proposed changes within the context of the, the regulatory guidance on what defines a substantial or an insubstantial change.
Right.
And that's a, that's just a, a process you need to go through. And if you deem it substantial, then you have to reopen the public hearing within thirty-five days. And the subject matter with regards to the, the reopened public hearing is the change. It's not, it's not the overall project. If you had approved the project, then um, then it would, it would take a lot for you to have to reverse that decision. Um, i- if it, if it did even rise to the level of you considering it a substantial change. If you considered it an insubstantial change, um, then it would be a- approved with that, um, with that decision to deem it in, insubstantial. And, and just, um, with regards to the, the guidance within the regulations of what defines substantial and insubstantial, it would be, uh, you know, the, the guidance is a ten percent increase in the total number of units. So if they had to decrease the number of units, it's not necessarily a substantial change. Um, if they changed from rental to, uh, for sale, that, 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 that would be a substantial change. So just merely a, a reconfiguration of the, of the, the project layout, um, is not, would not necessarily warrant reopening of the public.
We've had history on any, on several, uh, past forty B's where they, where we, we have had to come back and, and make that determination in. We've never had any substantial change, um, binding. So, um, you know, there's some familiar with that process, but certainly.
So maybe I misunderstood, but what, when and how is it going to be deemed in, within our purview? Or is this, you know, the, the state's call or whatnot?
You have an implication before you that, that, the applicant has put forth that it is your, within your jurisdiction and they have asked for a um, a waiver. They, they, they are not required to do what they did in going to get um, applying for an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation. It's, it's a good idea. But ultimately the decision on that, those two pocket wetlands is, is the Conservation Commission's. This, your board does not determine the jurisdiction of the wetlands. It just acts upon what's been put before you. Um, so right now, the Conservation Commission has asked, or has, uh, moved to engage, uh, peer review um, to look at these wetland issues. So that's going to take time. So I, I would say the Conservation Commission is a month or two away from rendering a decision as to whether these two wetlands are, are IVW. Um, you have an applicant that's that's hinting that they will give you an extension, you know, for one more meeting, but they'd like not to. Um, so I, I, i- if they were not to grant the, uh, um, extensions to wait for the Conservation Commission to ultimately render their decision on, on the, the question of the wetlands. Um, you, you'd be forced to, to render your decision, close the hearing and render your decision again, based on what's been put before you, which is these are locally jurisdictional wetlands when it, when it comes to discussion on what's within the, what's within the jurisdiction of your board under this comprehensive permit.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Or any, uh, to that, to that, um, desire to have that draft decision, any of those related, um, waivers or any sort of, uh, final characterization of those waivers, how that's be documented, would be include, included in there. And then we would have that document to then decide upon. As we said, we could agree to approve the waivers, um, related to that. Or not, and, um, and it would just be incorporated into our decision. And then we just, if, if it's, all this happens before the Concom does their process, because who knows how long their peer review takes place and things, right? We're just subject to potentially, as Joe said. There is some other decision that's made that's going to impact the project. We'll, we'll just have to deal with it, whether it's substantial or insubstantial down the road. And that's just the process, right? So. All right. So what do we think about, uh, we have that, that line in the sand currently as, as June sixth. And what is June sixth for date wise, Valerie? You have a calendar, buddy?
I think that's a Monday.
That's a Monday. So what's the likelihood that we could have a, um, that, you know, using your resources and collaboration, have a draft for that date? And, uh, if we can commit to that, then maybe we can get an extension for a couple of weeks past that. So if we have to, um, then have some discussion and then we can close the hearing, um, we, we give ourselves a little more. Uh, leeway, just in case something comes up that, you know, we can't handle next hearing.
Yeah, I, I think that that would definitely be a fair date to have a, um, an initial draft.
Okay. So if that's the target, uh, is Jim Lambert still on? Would, would you be, uh, you know, maybe have to discuss with your attorney, but, um, minimal to potentially another couple of weeks after that to have a extension and then we could, you know, be more comfortable closing at that point?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we would be. Um, we certainly would want to endeavor to have a draft or discussion on that June sixth date or by then. It, it certainly, if more time is needed, you know, a couple more weeks are needed, then, you know, of course, we're, we'll be willing to do that.
Okay.
I don't know if it matters. I'm not available that day, Monday, the sixth.
Okay. What day? In and around that time, if, if it had to be a little before then.
I could do the seventh. I could do, you know, the week, the week prior.
What's that Thursday, the week prior?
It's the second.
Second of June?
Yep.
Are people available that day, Valerie? Would that impose too much?
We have a meeting on the thirty-first of May, so it's getting close.
Right.
That's a lot of burden to put on Valerie to get those meetings. They're both intense meetings.
Right. So.
Yeah, that, I would like to be able to provide a draft to the board in advance of the, the next meeting that we're looking to schedule. Unfortunately, I do have a number of, um, of other types of deadlines in the end of May. So my, I mean, my preference would be that June sixth is the earliest, but, um, of course, if, if we need to be more flexible, but we need to try to make something else work.
Right. So how about, I mean, we, we would need them possibly, um, a letter that if we, we're going to have a letter that was going to extend it a couple of weeks into June that, um, that we get that, because then possibly we could have it on, with the seventh work for folks, if that rhyme was available. With the Mullins law, you know, we have to be careful of missing meetings, you know, we're calling this one where somebody can't vote on the application. So I want to be sure that our whole board can, um, be available, so we, we don't cut ourselves short or.
The seventh works for me and it's a, it's a full week after our other prior meeting on the, you know, the Tuesday of the week before.
Other forty B, right. Um, so.
I'm okay with that one.
So I'm not, I'm not available the seventh. I'm not currently a voting member on this particular project though. And I think, Valerie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this would be the only one I've missed. So if something did happen, I would still potentially be eligible um, to jump in if needed, but I cannot do the seventh.
How about Gabrielle, are you available on that seventh?
I can do the seventh.
And Andy?
I will just, I just want to note. I just wanted to note that we do have another meeting on, um, on June sixth, uh, for, for Mallard Lane. Just if that, if that does impact folks' availability.
Well, Brian's not a, Brian's, uh, not on the Mallard Lane one, so he couldn't be available that night. So, I mean, if we already have a scheduled that meeting, yeah, we, we certainly could have both these forty Bs wrapping up on that sixth date. So if we had to have the seventh, um, that maybe, that may work best. Would, would that be okay, Jim? From your team's perspective, I mean, we have that current six deadline, but.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman. We'll, we'll accommodate.
So why don't we, um, why don't we make a motion and, uh, you know, continue to June seventh, Tuesday at six P M. And, um, with the, you know, the intent that we're going to have, you know, um, collaborative effort to, uh, prepare a draft decision that we can really tires on in, in that decision, at least in the review that night, we'll at least go through all the final waivers and make a decision on the approval of, of those or not, you know, so we know what we're dealing with right then.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can make a motion that we continue the hearing until Tuesday, June seventh at six P M.
I will second that.
Um, those in favor, um, Gerard Hearn?
Yes.
Brad Reed?
Yes.
Ryan Holmes?
Yes.
Andy Kishet?
Yes.
And Gabriel Lamano?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we'll, some work to do on our, on our collective plates for that, uh, June seventh time. But I think that's going to be a big, um, big night for this project. So we're continued to June seventh at six P M. We have a hand up.
No, nope, I'm just saying goodnight.
Oh, goodnight. Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Did we lose Gerard?
I think we did. This was the only item on our agenda, so, um, we can go.
I motionally adjourned.
Second.
Andy? Andy Kishet? Brad Reed?
Yes.
Brian Holmes?
Yes.
Liz Hutchins?
Yes.
And Gabriel Lamano?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Good night, everyone. Good night.